Okay, we'll call a December 20 meeting in the Planning Commission order. We'll begin with the pledge of the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Cook.
Here.
Mr. Perkovic.
Here.
Mr. Sedoti.
Here.
Mr. Teeman.
Here.
Mr. Varga.
Here.
Mr. Cicero.
Here.
Mr. Snow.
Here. Entertaining motion for the pull of the minutes of the November 29 meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Yes?
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Perkovic.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Teeman.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes. And there are no public hearings this evening. Under old business, items one and two were tabled at the previous meeting. They'll remain on the table tonight, as will number five. Number five will be tabled. So if you're here for number five, we're not going to talk about it. So with that in mind, the first new business tonight is minor subdivision of one lot and to create three lots at Norton Parkway. Is that applicant here? Okay, would you come forward and identify yourself for the clerk, please, and give us a quick overview of what you'd like to do at that location?
Yes, good evening. My name's Everett Jones. I'm with H Flex Solutions. We're the developer of this property that is -- we're talking tonight about items number three and four.
Right.
And as I've talked to the staff of City Mentor for the Planning Commission, we've talked about discussing both of those at the same time. One, we're talking about the 10-acre site that we're going to do a subdivision on. We'll talk about that, and then we're going to discuss the building that we're going to put on parcel number two.
Okay.
So we'll just do that. So what you see up on the screen, you know, the 10-acre parcel is directly east of Avery Dennison. It is a parcel that we are looking at wanting to divide into three parcels. And as you're looking at the up towards Norton Parkway, before we start, let me introduce some people here. Like I said, I'm Everett Jones. I've got Dr. Jackie Sarar. She is major investor owner of the property. Her partner, and this is Dr. Greg Eppert, he is not here this evening. We also have two consultants for the property. We've got Shatal Galani here. He is the architect with Andrew's Architects. We've got John Walsh. He's a civil engineer with GBC Design. And then my wife also came with me. That's Carol Lee. So just so you know.
She wanted to see if you really showed up here.
He's the important one. There you go. So what I want to talk about is the, first of all, the site. It's a 10-acre site. We are going to divide it into three parcels. There's approximately a two-acre, a three-acre, and a four-and-a-half-acre parcel. And then there's we are, we're going to be putting a private road from Norton Parkway down to parcel number three. Parcel number three is the one furthest to the south where the hand is currently. The private road will then give us the frontage that we need on Norton Parkway in order to actually have it a fully developed site. So we're making parcels. Parcels one and two are the ones that are north, closest to Norton Parkway. Number three is the one that is south, which is the, that the road connects to. Now, the road will be a private road. It'll be owned by parcel number three, but we are doing cross easements for access into parcel one and parcel two. And when we get to the site plan, if you want to show the site plan, where we're, yeah, well, okay, the site, okay, we don't think we have the, we want to, do you have the one that shows the road itself with the, well, okay, it makes no difference. Go back to the other one. Go back to the site. So the road, we're going to have, actually have two access points in from the, you know, it actually, yes, me, Larry. Yeah, do go to this one, yes. The up towards, yes, where the hand is, that is the main entrance into our site for this building. The building is going to be a medical office building, two stories, 40,000 square feet. First floor will be approximately 24,000 square feet. Second floor will be approximately 16,000. So it's a 40,000-square-foot medical office building. So we're going to have two exits, entrances into it. We're going to have an entrance in closest up to north Norton Parkway. And we're going to have one down further, further to the south end as a means of getting better traffic control in and out of the, out of the site. Up at the Norton Parkway itself, on the northeast corner, we're having a right turn-only exit out of the parking lot, just in order for traffic control again. So you'll come up there, there'll be a right turn, hand turn only, going straight, straight east in order to alleviate traffic flow. Now, back up at the boulevard on Norton Parkway, we're going to do a curb cut there. One, what we thought made sense, do one curb cut, put in a private road for all three parcels, again, to limit, to limit the amount of curb cuts that are going out onto Norton Parkway. And that's why we're going to come in our private road, have two entrances into, into the property. And then obviously, people can leave through those two entrances onto our private drive or exit again out on the northeast corner. In terms of, now, there are several comments that were made by, by the staff, the planning staff. One is the exit right-hand turn out of the northeast corner, right now, when we presented it, we showed it as an 18-foot-wide road. The staff is recommending it be 20-foot. Obviously, we will certainly, certainly do that. A couple of other items that were brought up in the, in the staff comments were the parking that is on the north end of the parking lot, up towards Norton Road, that it was recommended that those be designated for compact cars, so it'd be, you know, smaller spaces for compact cars, give more room for landscaping and buffering over to Norton Parkway. The other, the other item is we showed a total of 16 handicap spaces. They're recommending that we put in 20. Certainly, we'll do that when we do our final, our final site presentation for approval. And there were other miscellaneous comments that were made. And, you know, obviously, all these comments that were made on, on the plans that we presented were in terms of when we do our final site presentation to you, when we are fully ready to do, you know, the building design and everything else, ready for your approval, we will make, you know, certainly all the comments. Because, you know, our company, we've done, you know, over 2 million square feet of properties, medical office buildings, hospitals, et cetera. And certainly, you know, anything that the staff recommends, or certainly anything that is required by building codes and standards or state building codes, we will certainly comply with all those. And you'll have the opportunity to see all that when we submit. But I guess my question now is, is there anything on the site that you want to ask or have questions on before you get into the building?
Let me ask the staff. Anything you guys need to bring up?
With regard to the site plan?
I mean, we can, we can deal with both of these items together, I think.
We don't have anything other than the conditions noted in the other items that we have.
Sir, you've read the staff report, right?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, of course. Yeah, we have the staff. I have the entire staff report. I've been through it all.
So the conditions that are listed in the staff report you're in agreement with?
Totally. Absolutely. Yes.
Mr. Teeman, did you have something you wanted to say?
On the subdivision, yes.
Go right ahead.
Thank you. There's a lot of moving pieces here, obviously, as the commission can see. There's obvious mineral rights since there's a, there's a well. Whether or not it's still producing, I don't know that we have any knowledge of that. And then you can see the access road, which, you know, cuts actually over an adjacent parcel as well. So one of the aspects of the proposed subdivisions for lots one and three, kind of questioning whether or not that may be premature at this point. In other words, subdivide off lot number two and for purposes of the, of the development of that specific area and, and leave any potential further subdivision of lots one and three for when a future, you know, development is proposed. Obviously, I'm sure they've done a tremendous amount of due diligence. It just hasn't come, you know, we're just not privy to that at this, at this moment in time tonight. But presuming that's an active well and that there's some limitations on development around that, kind of wondering if, whether or not it's premature to, to subdivide in this specific manner, knowing that that may be something that has to be worked around significantly. And again, I'm not really sure what else, you know, the mineral rights, you know, may have in terms of effect. Obviously, we want to make sure that the, the purpose is to make sure that the subdivision, the proposed private road are placed in such a manner that we really optimally position these, these areas for their, for development in the future. And I would hate to see that private road go in some place where, you know, some adjustments today could avoid some problems, you know, tomorrow. The other thing, and I don't have an answer to this because it wasn't on my desk way back in the day, but obviously, the par, the city owns that parcel to the south. We may have some ingress and egress easement rights as well over these lands, or not, but that's something that we'd want to take a look at and obviously work as appropriate with this developer to address any of the city's rights as well. So there's a lot of moving pieces, obviously, of the development of this nature. So we just want to make sure that we've got a good feel for all of the legal interests that are at play here, the mineral rights being one that really sort of pops out.
Okay. So do you know if the well's an active well?
Well, currently is not. We've, we've contacted the ODNR. We've got data about that. It is, they've not even recorded their, the production for over two years of the ODNR, which is there in violation of that. We've also, we've done, obviously, a complete ALTA survey on the, on the, on the property, which, which shows in the, on that other site plan that you show for, for lot number two. What we've got is the, with the well, we've actually contacted the Utility Pipeline Limited Company who manages this. They actually traced the well for us, and after they flagged it and traced it, we went out and resurveyed the land. We've got, we showed that the entire sales line for this thing goes down the west property line, which is adjacent to the Avery Dennison line. It goes all the way back to our, to our furthest southwest corner of our lot, which is down at the, you know, where you're going down there, that's where the line is, lines up. I don't, I might even have the plan. Hold on, let me just check.
Does that answer your question?
It, it.
Does it answer some of your questions?
It raises more problems.
Well, so is that some information you'd like to be privy to?
I, I think so. And again, we're operating from the presumption that the well exists and it has to be dealt with at, at some point in time, if it can be. Someone owes those mineral rights. Now, if it's not this specific, you know, proper, property owner or purchaser that can also acquire those mineral rights and extinguish it and cap the well and be done with it, that obviously raises quite, quite a few questions. And I'm by no means an expert on oil and gas rights, but, you know, we've got all kinds of variables in Ohio. There's the dormant minerals act that sometimes comes into play. We do know for, you know, a lot of operators have, have recently gone into bankruptcy, and the status of some of these rights are often in receivership, and there's lots of, lots of moving pieces. And I don't know that that applies in this particular case, but I do know that that has been a significant, significant source of, of activity for other developments, both within and outside of Mentor's borders. So it's good, it's good to hear that, that well may go away and all these rights extinguished and we'll have a real unfettered area for whatever future developments may get proposed, but it's just an open question. So that's why I was wondering whether or not it makes sense to subdivide parcels one and three now, as opposed to just holding that off to some future point when some of these issues may have better resolution. And again, that, that line between parcel, between proposed lot one and three, when you get a specific, as the planning commission knows, when you get a specific, you know, potential user in there, very often you'll find out that that line was, was, needs to be adjusted or things of that nature have to happen. So I'm just wondering if it's, and it's fairly simple to subdivide that in the future. I'm just wondering if that's premature at this juncture.
If you don't mind, I would like to address a couple of these.
Let me ask a question before you answer.
Sure, of course.
If you just split off, what is sub lot two, what hardship does that give you?
Well, several items. Number one, the, for parcel number one, Dr. John Mascaro is planning a, he owns Great Lakes Jaw and Implant Center. His plan is to put a 5,500-square-foot Jaw and Implant Center building on parcel one. That is already, they're already planning it. They've got an architect engaged. They're working directly on that. The parcel number three is owned, it will be owned by, by Dr. Greg Eppert, and his brother will own property number three. What their, his plan is, he will be a tenant and investor in the building in parcel two, which is the one we're planning for tonight, 40,000 square feet. He is planning on putting a, removing, relocating his existing surgery center, which is on Mentor Avenue, to a new building in this location. His plan is to put a approximately 10,000 to 12,000 square foot building there for, for his surgery center. So we've already got all three parcels planned, plus the fact that we're putting in this private road with cross easements that are going to feed parcel two, parcel one, and parcel three. Part of this entire development is contingent upon making that work properly because Greg Eppert and his brother are going to own property three and the road coming in in order to make that a viable and, and fully owned site, you know, developable site.
So let me ask you one follow-up question with that.
Sure.
Since those guys have already planned what they're doing, is there a reason we haven't seen those plans?
They're not as far along as we are, that's why. I mean, the thing is, we are, we are ready, we are.
Ready to put a shovel on the ground?
Pardon? Not, not yet. But we are, within about two and a half months, we're going to come back here with our full set of plans, architecture, you know, engineering, everything, utilities, ready for your final approval. We hope to have this in going sometime in April of this coming year, 2019.
Okay.
And I suppose the point is, it, it may be, when you see the specific proposals, it may not be lot, you know, one and three. It may be lot one, three, and four. That's why we're trying to understand, you know, how some of these things may, may fit in the future, and that's why I'm suggesting it may be premature to divide lots one and three. Everything can go for, everything can still go in, still get constructed in furtherance of the development on lot number two as proposed. It just, it just seems like there's a big unknown if lots one and three are subdivided as proposed currently.
We, I'm going to tell you, we have actually, when, from the time we first submitted this thing, we had a slightly different adjustment in terms of where the lot lines were dividing one and three. We've adjusted it according to the plans that we are currently working with to put these other two buildings on the site also. I mean, I mean, it's, you're, you're making it sound like we are not proposing what we want to have done. We are proposing exactly what we'd like to have accomplished here, including the road that comes, and the private road that'll be feeding all three of these parcels.
I understand. Sometimes, for example, just as a case in point, we see that the lot number one, the plans change and maybe a larger square footage, which is, which is fine. And then you realize, well, there's going to be a parking deficiency because there's not enough room on lot number one to accommodate the required amount of parking in the code. And that's just one simple example of how, until you actually see the development plan, it's sometimes a little bit difficult to, to move forward with, with the subdivision, knowing that it may have to change. And we want to avoid having to give any variances or things of that nature, because once the lots are created, they're created, they're of record, and, and we often, after the fact, find that there's some issues relative to developing them in the way that, that plans may change. So.
So that's your recommendation?
That's my recommendation, planning commission, obviously. If you think it's, I'm being overly cautious, I understand.
Okay. Go right ahead.
Okay. My concern about that is, obviously, this is a 10-acre parcel. We are, we are taking down the entire 10-acre parcel and putting into these three subdivided lots. Those three subdivided lots have investors who are going into the various parcels with their buildings. And in order to, if we, if we were to set aside one and three, I believe we would have to withdraw our, our asking to proceed with number two, because it just would not make viable sense for us to move forward. So, I mean, I, I'm not quite understanding the reasoning behind not doing this no matter that we have asked, because we've planned this thing exactly the way that we think it makes absolutely the most sense for us and for the city.
The, the, yeah, the, the code requires in subdivisions generally that we were looking for parcels to have, they can't have irregular angles, for example. They all require frontage on a dedicated, you know, public street. And so what is proposed is not really in accordance with our subdivision regulations. Now, those subdivision regulations, they can be waived in particular cases. If the issue is it needs to be subdivided so that lots one, two, and three can, title can then be transferred to, you know, the individuals who ultimately are going to develop them, I, I understand that. But right now, we don't have that information in front of us, and so it's kind of hard to evaluate whether or not it's appropriate to create a subdivision where the lots are really non-conforming in accordance with our code. Again, it may be a good idea, and it may be, it may be a situation where ultimately there, there is no harm. But again, what's, the information that has been provided is that we've got a non-conforming subdivision. And so we're trying to reconcile the code requirements with what's being represented. And I think as Mr. Snow indicated, if there was some, maybe just a schematic plan of how lots one and three were going to be built out, square footage, you know, do some back-of-the-envelope calcs relative to, to parking and other required infrastructure, it, it may allow the planning commission the, the comfort it needs to move forward.
Let me, let me just state a couple of things. Number one, when we did our original proposal and we met with the City of Mentor Planning Group, we brought in our traffic study, too. We did a traffic study based on all three of these parcels. What we, we actually showed on there what the square footage of each of the buildings on number one, two, and three are going to be, what the parking requirements are going to be, and the traffic study was, was reviewed by the planning department, and, and there was total compliance with what would normally be expected. That's one thing. Secondly, when you said that there are some irregularities, the two things that you mentioned, one was, you know, the, the frontage on, on Norton Parkway Road, we have that. We have 100% complied with that item. Number two, the second thing that you mentioned was irregular lot lines. Well, the 10-acre parcel is an irregular parcel. Just look at it up here. So I, when you say irregular shaped, we have an irregular shape to begin with. We have taken this and done the very, very best that we can to make it comply with a developable property.
Yeah, the, the panhandle, obviously, is not something that, that is code compliant. But again, I'm, I'm trying to help you to get to yes, by the way. I'm not trying to, by no means trying to curtail anything. And it's good that information was shared with apparently the administration. Mr. Chairman, I don't know if that information relative to parking calculations and everything is something that, if it could be brought forward, perhaps.
It's in the proposal, it's in the package of information that you have in front of you.
So.
The entire package of, of traffic study is there.
Okay. In terms of the development for parcels one and three, you know, to the extent you want to place conditions relative to, in other words, part of the approval would be relative to the square footage of what's going to be constructed there, that, that may provide the planning commission some comfort level relative to those two parcels and creating them now, unless there's some additional more specific information that could be brought forward.
This was never brought up to us, that we needed that to come to this meeting. I mean, we certainly could have and would have. We have, we have a, a proposed building layout and parking on parcel number one. Parcel number two is what we know the square footage that is required, and Dr. Eppert, who was one of the principal owners of the building in number two, and also one of the principal owners of the entire 10-acre parcel, is the one who will be building a surgical center in building number three, or parcel number three, which it seems like, you know, this is, this is, we intended this 10-acre parcel to be a medical complex, a three-building medical complex, which it will be. And like I said, the building number in three, which, or two, which we're looking at tonight, 40,000 square feet, all doctors. Parcel number one will be Great Lakes Surgical, let's see, Great Lakes Jaw and Implant Center, and the back one will be a surgical center, all completely medical buildings, which I, it seems like from our, our experience, we are developers of medical properties. That's all we do. We do hospitals, medical office buildings, and, and senior living centers. That's the only thing that we do. So we are, we're quite familiar with what is required and what is normally desired for a city in a, in a parcel like this.
So let me ask you one more question.
Yes, sir.
Would it be worthwhile guaranteeing that what, what you say is true and what, what you presented tonight is true, that there won't be any deviation in the square footage of the buildings, and they will lay out like you've indicated they will lay out?
Well, certainly, certainly.
Can we say that?
What I will say is that, yes, on the parking, the parking study that we had done, we proposed the square footage of the building. I will tell you this, we will not overbuild, build higher than the square footage that is, that was shown in the parking studies. And, and the thing is, in fact, more than like the way we're planning right now, there'll be less than, than what was, what we were.
Mr. Teeman, does that satisfy you?
We've done everything we can to do due diligence on this, on this in the proper way.
Yeah, ultimately, it's, you know, the commission's judgment in this matter. As you know, and, and, you know, obviously, the gentleman doesn't see all the things that go wrong that we see, but financing falls apart, infrastructure doesn't get constructed. We, we need to deal today with, with some of the what-ifs that no one can control. And, and that doesn't mean that everyone's not working towards a successful project in accordance with what your vision is for it. But again, we always seem to deal with the problems that arise later on, so we try to, try to head those off at the pass, so to speak. And again, if the planning commission's comfortable moving forward, that's, that's your judgment. I just, again, it's a little unusual, but that's, again, that's your judgment.
Any other questions, Mr. Chairman?
I have a good question.
Mr. Secretary?
Mr. Secretary, yeah. Just as my own observation, a, and I'm, I'm actually speaking to the city as much as I'm speaking to you, a, a simple master plan for these properties would probably answer all these questions that everybody has, which is just conceptual, and it shows everything kind of on one little document.
I tell you something? If we had known we were to bring that tonight, we certainly would have.
Sure.
We, I, I did not understand. Let me, let me just say this, too, is that we were hoping that tonight, if we were to get approval, we would proceed so that we would be back here on your March 3rd timeframe in order to get this, if we have to delay this for another time.
And I'm, I'm not challenging with that.
Okay.
I'm just kind of speaking in general, that if.
You would have done that.
If maybe we could get some of the, you know, like requirement that we have multiple properties and the issues, that we'd look for a conceptual master plan that just guide us all as to what's the overall going on. And then you can approve a master plan and say, no, you, you're going to, that's what's been approved, and it would answer a lot of these questions.
Oh, yeah.
I'm just kind of speaking to both you and the city at the same time.
Let me just tell you, yes.
Let me move on. I mean, I don't want to dwell on it.
Okay.
I just, that would have been useful for all of us.
I would like to address one thing.
Okay, go ahead.
And Larry, do you have the page number two of the traffic center? If you could put that up on the board? Okay, this, this graph right there, it, it actually shows the square footage of the, of the three buildings. If you look at the number two one, 40,000 square feet, that is on parcel number two, the one that we are here to get, you know, approval on tonight. The one above that, 15,000 square feet, that is for parcel number one. Actually, the building that they're going to build on parcel number one is going to be closer to 5,500 square feet, not 15,000. So going to the highest, we went to the highest level that would normally be expected to be put in this many acres, and it still meets the traffic requirements that are required for the, for the city of Mentor. The third parcel, the parcel in the back, which is going to be the surgery center, that, that particular lot, we know could take more than 10,000 square feet, but we know that Dr. Eppert would like to put on approximately 10,000 square foot medical office building. So just by what you've seen here, we've got this already data, we knew what we wanted to do. We could have brought this in if we had known. We would have gladly, gladly done it if, if that had been proposed for us.
I have a question for the city. So the city of Mentor has a piece of property south of this. The Cleveland Clinic has this leg that's coming in, and then there's a land bank piece of property also at the heel of that, this property over on the, on the east side. It looked, it would look to me, based on what they're doing, and I have no problem with what they're doing, but are we, are we accepting the fact that these properties will no longer be accessible? Or, or is there something in his proposal that will allow accessibility to these properties?
I'd like to speak to that, too.
Well, first my, first my question is to the city. Has that been considered?
Again, as I indicated in my earlier statements, a lot of this happened, you know, that was not, it was not on my desk when, when a lot of these issues developed in this area of Newell Creek. I would suspect the city has some, some ingress and egress rights to that parcel. I just don't have that document in front of me, and I don't know what that is tonight. So I.
And again, that would be useful, just to see in the simplest graphic way as to how, and for instance, the Cleveland Clinic, I'm not speaking for them, but I'm just wondering, is this something that is acceptable to them? Does this leave their, this piece of their property undevelopable for their purposes?
I'd like to respond to that. This is, this is a graphic from your department, your planning department, which you're well aware of. This is, this is the parcel we're talking about here, this is Avery Dennison down here. The Cleveland Clinic property that butts up against ours at the back, they own all the property from here back to here, so their access is completely controlled off of, what's Center Street?
No, I understand.
Okay.
I'm just wondering if they have plans. I'm not, I'm not having you speak for them, I don't mean to challenge you with this question, but does this work with, you know, are they aware that they may lose all access or from this end of the property, and does that create a problem down the road with...
Without having any title work, I don't know...
Access, you know, all kinds of different thoughts.
Without having any title work for the clinic's property in front of us, I really can't answer whether or not they've any, they've got any ingress or egress rights over this specific parcel that's, that's the subject of this tonight, I just don't have that answer.
And then this other property, I don't even, it's Auditor's Land Bank, State of Ohio, what's the status of that property that also butts up against this property that appears to be losing whatever access it might have had?
We'd have to, I'd have to have title work to answer that question.
Again, we're Planning Commission, I'm trying to figure out what the plan is, but not just their plan, but do we, have we addressed how all this property is affected by what they want to do relative to a plan? I'm not trying to challenge anybody, I'm just trying to say, are we create, if we go ahead, and I think they, they're very thoughtful about what they want to do, and they know what they want to do, and it seems reasonable, but are we creating other problems with this adjacent property that we're just going to, you know, not, not that it's their problem, but are we creating some problems here that we don't have solutions for?
Well, Mr. Varga, the parcel exists today behind this parcel, so, I mean, it's already...
It's already cut off.
Already cut off, so it's not...
But once they put buildings on, it's really cut off.
Yeah, so, I mean, to Mr. Zeman's point, I mean, there may be some access easement rights, but it doesn't change the fact that they have a parcel that's in front of it that fronts on Norton Parkway. I don't imagine that they have an obligation to beat that.
No, and I'm not trying to make this his problem, I'm just trying to see, is this, is all the players here and not here going to rest easy with our approval of this? It's kind of an untechnical, open-ended question.
When, for the subject parcel that's sought to be subdivided, there'd be title work that would be done. Anyone with a legal interest in it would be identified in the title exam that would be done. So if there's easement rights, for example, the mineral rights are obvious, there's a well there, so that's something that is a known third-party legal interest in this parcel. Other third, potential third-party legal interests in this parcel would be easement rights for ingress and egress, you know, to any adjacent parcels, and there's other types of easement rights as well. So unless you've got the title work in front of you, you really can't answer that question in any definitive way, it's just purely speculative.
I'm not trying to stir the pot, I was just trying to, I'm looking at these adjacencies and wondering, you know, is everybody on board here? And just for the sake of comment, I did notice that that line that he was talking about that came from the well, not only does it go to the northeast, northwest corner, it crosses the street and goes into the residential property on the other side. Is that still an active line? Do we know that?
Well, first of all, let me just address...
No, I mean, I'm asking, you know, that's a whole different project across the street, and that line looks like it goes right across the street and into that property, based on what it shows on this drawing right here.
When it was producing, it very well may have had an end users wherever that, you know, wherever it terminated, but if it's not producing, obviously, any of those end users would have had an alternate source by now. But again, we don't necessarily have that information.
I just, when I saw it hidden for the residential property, I was kind of a little concerned.
Yeah, if it is dry or just not producing, and it hasn't been capped, that obviously is a bit of a red flag relative to whether or not the operator is, there's some issues there, but again, that's a bit speculative at this point.
That's all I got, that's all.
I'd like to address a few things, just to clarify. Number one, you're all familiar with what an alter survey is? Now, I'm sure this gentleman over here, it's an alter survey is what is done when you're doing title work on a piece of property. This entire 10-acre parcel, we had an alter survey done, we submitted it with our, with our submittal to the, to the city. And what it does, it shows every easement, every liability that might be contingent upon that site. The reason you do an alter survey is so you can get a clear title for mortgages and ownership. We've done that, we've submitted that, it's been, it's clear, and this is, this is an alter survey, which, again, the city has full access to, we submitted it. Secondly, the well that is on that site, it is owned by an entity that is currently in bankruptcy, they are in receivership, the receivership is actually owned by a bank, is being held by a bank in receivership. We have, like I said, we have actually had it flagged, and we know exactly where that, where the sales line goes. And where it goes, it does not, the sales line is the line that we cannot build on top of with a building, we can build on top of with parking lots and curbs and sidewalks and landscaping and things like that. We've planned everything we've done around this, because we know, we've done all the work to find out where all this stuff is. We know where it's at, we've designed all the access for the site and for the buildings around it, and we've taken all this into account. The other thing is, is that the, the well and the extractor and the tanks themselves, we are designing around it so they can even remain in place. We don't need, because we're only going to put a 10,000 square foot building on the third site, we don't need the access to that, to that well. If it stays there, it's fine. If we end up buying it as a lease, you know, as lease rights, that's something we may consider. However, we don't need to do that, and we are just making a decision if we can, but again, it's in receivership, it's in litigation, it's in bankruptcy, we can't even really deal with them. So we're like, okay, we're going to put that aside, we know where everything is, the lease can be intact on property that we will own, and we don't have to touch it until the litigation is done. And whether it happens in two years or 10 years, it doesn't really make any difference to us. And we have really, I'm going to just tell you this, we have done our complete due diligence on this property. We don't go into properties like this and just do it and think we have an idea. We exercise every legal right, every, we meet with the city planners, we do everything possible to meet the requirements that have been asked for, and that is what we are trying to bring forth to you tonight. And I'm going to say this again, that we, it is contingent that we get approval on one, two, and three, because we have projects that are going to go ahead. Our plan is to have, come back to you in about two, two and a half months and present to you the site plan, the final site plan and all the documentation for the buildings and utilities, everything, so we can actually start construction. If we, if this does not happen, what we will have to do, we'll have to reconsider whether we even want to purchase this property, because it's just not going to make economic sense to us. We won't be able to buy it with some of the contingencies that you're talking about putting on place, that, because you're, it's being portrayed that we have not thought about this. We have not only thought about it, we've planned this thing for months on how to bring this thing forward to the city.
Any other questions for the applicant or the city? If not, I'll entertain a motion based on the minor subdivision. There are some conditions that are placed on that. Hearing no motion.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to accept the project with, there's only two conditions for the minor subdivision.
Correct.
Let me ask the city, could we make a third condition that by approving this sub, well, we're approving it as-is, as it's defined?
As it's defined.
And not to be amended significantly, you know, in the future, right?
I don't know that that type of limitation is necessary, there's always an opportunity to come back.
Then we'll make, then we'll just work with the two conditions for approval.
Okay, what are the conditions, just so I'm clear?
The staff report?
The staff report.
Okay, yes, okay, fine, I thought there were additional ones.
No, no, I, that's fine. So just, those are the two conditions.
Right.
Second.
Yes, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Perkovic.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes. You're all set relative to the minor subdivision.
Thank you.
Now, let's, we want to deal with the site plan.
Yes, yes. Thank you.
There are six conditions listed there, are you in agreement with those six conditions?
Yes, absolutely. We would, yes, we absolutely endorse them, 100%.
Any comments from the administration?
Nothing additional.
Okay. Any issues, any comments, questions for the applicant?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Sedoti.
Just to get an understanding of the players involved.
Okay.
You said Dr. Ebert and his brother are main investors and developers on this site, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and Dr. Ebert is planning on moving the surgical center that's on Mentor Avenue in Painsville to this location here?
That is his plan. He wants, here is the plan, what he wants to do is get this building built first, the 40,000, move his current practice, which is currently over at Lake Health.
So move the ophthalmology offices over there?
That's right, over into this building. He will be major investor, owner, and tenant in this building. A major, I mean, he, his practice is about 16,000 square feet, it's a significant space.
So he's vacating the Lake Health Medical Center?
That's exactly right, yes, and then, and his goal would be, when he gets settled in here, to then build his surgical center here, because obviously, it makes so much sense for it to be in his practice.
Well, of course, sure.
So that's what he would...
And a question for Dr. Sarar, you plan on moving the Macy Dental Associates into this building once it's completed, and vacating your current location? I assume, you appear to be very thorough, I assume all your site issues, geotechnical, environmental, that's all taken care of, you have no major problems?
We have no issues that we are aware of at all. I mean, we have not done, you know, total site borings and stuff yet, but based on what has been built with Avery, for instance, and their major complex there, there is no issue that we are at all aware of or concerned with. And again, with the alter survey we've done, there doesn't seem to be anything that we, that has come up that we would be concerned about, and again, we do this on a regular basis.
I understand, okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any comments relative to parking lot, landscape islands? You agree with all those?
Again, we agree with every one of them, in fact, we endorse them, and, you know, for instance, the going from 16 to 20 handicap spaces, of course we would do that, because this is the medical office building, of course we would do that.
You know, when the irrigation goes in, you have to turn it on.
Yes, I think, I think we know that, yeah.
I mean, that's an important consideration.
Yes, yes.
Because a lot of guys put it in and don't turn it on.
Yeah, and you know what, the other good thing here is, you know, for the water management and things like that, you know, there is a major water management resource placed directly northeast of this facility, which is the watershed for this entire area, that's already been taken care of during the time when they, when you guys built the Norton Parkway. So I mean, a lot of, a lot of the infrastructure is beautifully done already that we would love to tap into, we're hoping to tap into.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Varga.
That was actually one of my questions, and you can maybe explain it further, it said, I didn't see any stormwater retention on this site, you're saying that it's...
Not required, and this is our siblings near...
It's part of the subdivision, and so that the subdivision as a whole has taken care of the stormwater management, so we don't need anything on the property. I don't need a bigger explanation, I just wanted to know...
Answer is yes.
I didn't see its structure, so I just wanted to make sure that it was...
No, it's, normally, we do end up with retention ponds on almost every one of our facilities, but this one, it's already been 100% taken care of.
That answers my question.
Any comment, further comments from the city?
Nothing.
Who had a question down there? Mr. Sedoti?
Our Division of Engineering is requiring a left-turn bay on Norton Parkway to move the traffic out of the way of the westbound traffic you're going to build.
Yeah, I, in fact, I addressed that, that we're going to be putting, in the boulevard, we're going to do a, do a, an access onto our private road, and that private road, that private road needs access off of Norton Parkway, as you're going, as you're going west, we will do a turn lane, you know, off of the main driveway.
Right, that's what they want.
And we know it's got to be 50 feet long, and it's got to be a 50-foot beyond that for surging into the space. We certainly understand all those, we absolutely agree with every one of those. In fact, it makes it better for us, because the worst thing we could do is have a facility you can't get in and out of, and people were complaining about, we would never want that.
And you're aware of our code with respect to the HVAC, that's, if you place them on your top of the building?
They have to be shielded, yeah, of course.
We have a staff member who's going to look at that very often.
Yep, we've got, already got it planned in our elevation and stuff, yes, we do.
Good, I'm glad you're approving.
No emails.
Yes, no emails. And along that same line, and I'm not, the building looks like you've addressed a lot of things already architecturally, that we think of this as a standalone building and that at your final presentation should show us all, all elevations.
Of course.
And it goes without saying, but some people don't think that way, so, so we're concerned about how this building looks all the way around.
Of course, and when we come back, we'll have, you know, renderings and elevations all the way around, of course, we'll have complete construction documents, complete. I'm an architect myself, okay, and yet, yet we hire, our company hires architectural firms because we do a lot of projects.
One other, one other comment if I could.
Yes, sir.
I think we need to take into consideration what the other two buildings are going to look like on the property, so it has more of a campus-type feel.
I got to tell you, you guys will have the entire ability to review it and approve it, I mean, certainly, when we come back, we've got to come back for each one of the building individually. What we're looking for now is get, get the site set so we can complete the designs on those buildings, come back to you for approval on one and three, but our plan right now is to come back to you in March for building number two, parcel number two. Yeah, well, yeah, they're, they're racing to catch up with us, okay, so it's...
Okay, any other questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion. There are six conditions.
Motion to approve the preliminary site plan with six conditions.
Second.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Perkovic.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We're looking forward to working with the City of Mentor, we really are, I totally mean that, we're excited about this project.
Is this your first project in Mentor?
It's the first one for us as H-Plax, I mean, John, his firm was involved in the senior facility directly across the road on Mentor Parkway, you know, that was what, three years ago?
As I mentioned earlier, number five is going to be tabled, so I'll entertain a motion to table it, since they gave us incomplete information. So, is there a motion to table it?
So moved.
Second.
Yes?
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Perkovic.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.